Good evening. I'd like to call the January 12, 2022, meeting to order. Mrs. Hutchinson, will you call the role?
Here.
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 Here. Here.
Here.
Mr. Buck, will you lead us in the pledge? Okay, communication from our host school. Mr. Buck is here to talk with us about what's happening at Monroe.
Good evening. There it is. So I actually am not speaking about things that are happening at Monroe. I am actually giving you some information of something that myself and our fellow administrators and some of our staff and I think six years of kids have been very proud of, and that is our cross-town soccer tournament. As you know, soccer is not one of our sports that we play interscholastically, but we have intermurals. And basically, if you want to go to the next slide, or am I supposed to do this? There we go. How it began was we, I think it was Mr. Pilkington here at Hubble and I were talking at a principal meeting, and we were saying that our intermural soccer teams like have, you know, 50 kids and they're, you know, coming every day. And, you know, I think John was saying that like his kids actually go out in the snow and play, and so just, you know, really a lot of interest. And we said we should like, you know, get buses and like play each other sometime. And so that's exactly what we did is we, the year before we started in 2015, met with my athletic director and one of the teachers here at Hubble and kind of talked about how we could do that. And so we had about a half a year of planning. And then the next year, our first year, our annual cross-town classic was just Hubble and Monroe. And so it was, there we go. So what happens is we do a tournament. So and then the second year, the second year, all four middle schools and ever since then, all middle schools. So we have a big tournament at school. So each, each school, and this is not just like a day. This is like, you know, a couple of week-long tournament where kids form their own teams. It can be any grade, you know, any sex, anything like that. And they actually come and they form their team, and then they play through this tournament until we actually, each school has a champion. And so when that champion is crowned by their school, we all get them t-shirts. And so we all, so that's a fun thing, too, is to have all of our kids wear these, you know, t-shirts representing their, their school. And actually, I know at Monroe, our teachers, you know, have an opportunity to buy some of those shirts. And so we have our Monroe soccer shirts. And so once we do that, we have been hosting. So we've hosted the last six years. So all four of those teams come to Monroe. And what's really cool, one of the best things, we didn't do it the first year, but every year after that, we have had both Wheaton North soccer coaches and Wheaton South soccer coach come over and talk to the students before the game. And so as you can see here in the picture, we gather them all around. And so really what the message of the soccer coaches at the high school are saying, and they bring also some of their own players. So some of the kids that went to Monroe that our students know, see them wearing their Wheaton North, you know, soccer stuff. And obviously, Wheaton South, they bring their students. And so they see the kids and they hear the, the coaches tell them, like, if you want to play soccer, here are the things that you have to do. You have to get good grades. You have to be a good student. You have to be respectful to your teachers. You have to do all the things that good athletes do to be able to be a part of this, this, you know, team here at the high school. And so it kind of gets the kids pumped. And then obviously, they stick around and watch the game and do some little coaching and things like that and pull kids aside. And so it's a really cool thing for our kids to be able to, you know, experience kind of high school soccer at the middle school level. As an administrator, we have a little fun, too. As you can see, we have, you know, one shirt where my former assistant principal, Mrs. Baldess, and I, we did not win that year. And so we had to wear a Hubble t-shirt the entire day. And all our kids are like, why are you wearing Hubble? And so, but then one year we did, we did win. And so John and his former assistant principal got to wear 1980s Monroe shirts. So it is fun. And so we try to, you know, have some fun with the kids, too, and the teachers do, too. Here's the results that we've had for the last six years. Obviously, last year, didn't have it, but this year we actually did. And we were really excited to be able to do it again and bring it back. And there is a trophy. And so that's a traveling trophy that goes from, from school to school. And obviously, it's on the announcements and things like that. So it's, it's a really kind of fun thing. And then here's just some more pictures. We have had weather, probably 70 degrees one year and probably 19 degrees at one time. So we have had weather, both just, you know, freezing and really beautiful weather. And so it's, it's always a good time. And so I'm glad I was able to present that. Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Buck?
No, I think Franklin needs to get on the ball. I didn't see their name up there.
Yeah. They always have a good team. It's always fun. And so we actually do a round robin. So they come. And so we have two fields that go. And then we have the turf field behind us. And so we actually play on the full field at the end. And it's always good. And we turn the lights on. And it's a cool experience for the kids.
I just have one question. Do other districts in the area do a similar type of a thing, or is this unique to us?
That's a great question. I mean, I know some districts, like the former district I came from, actually had soccer, you know, as a regular sport. And so, I mean, I know some of them do, but I, you know, I also know, I don't think so. I mean, I haven't heard a whole lot of like cross-town intermurals. I mean, intermurals are mainly at your own school and not traveling. And so I think, you know, us traveling and getting buses and t-shirts and things like that, I think that's pretty unique.
Great experience for the students. Thank you for sharing that with us. Okay. Are there any modifications to the agenda? Hearing none. That moves us on to the board president report. I just have a couple of things. Right prior to the break, I had the opportunity to meet with IASB President Tom Bertrand and seven other large unit district presidents in the area. It was very productive. It's very interesting. You know, we're a state with 800 and something school districts, and every school district is unique. And the challenges, though, for very small districts and very large districts are very, very different. And so we, we talked a lot about what are some ways that IASB can help with large unit school districts because we have a little bit of a different challenges and things that are there. And so we found out that resolutions, the process of all of that is being looked at this year. They're going through the constitution for the state school boards, and we're going to have regular meetings now as a large unit with Tom Bertrand. We're trying to do a quarterly thing. So I want to take a moment to say thank you to our staff and recognize the challenges, not only for this year, but really the challenges of the past week and a half. You know, when you're a large district, even if you're a small district, every single hand has an impact on whether our doors can open, whether it's the people who are at our bus terminals early in the morning, warming up those buses to make sure that there's transportation, our building and grounds people who I know were, last Sunday, working with, you know, the snow and the ice that was falling, our building staff has been incredible in doing everything they can to be there for students, as well as our district office. I know even Dr. Schuler was subbing at Monroe. I know our principals are in the classroom subbing, and our staff, our teachers are covering for each other when maybe somebody is, needs to be out. And that's very stressful to do in the midst of everything else. And so I just want to say thank you and that these efforts do not go unnoticed. And then I just have one more quick thing that I'd like to say to, to everybody. 2022 is our third year of COVID, and everyone's tired. We're tired of the reality of the virus and what it's caused and the uncertainty that lies ahead. But a new year can bring hope. The hope I have for 2022 is for our community to focus on working together versus working apart. Respectful disagreement is healthy, and it can challenge us, challenge us to do better. But when we dig in our heels and take sides, children lose. There's a reason that school boards are nonpartisan entities. When we leave politics outside of the board table, decisions are made with all children in mind. It allows parents, community members, and educators to open doors for learning versus shutting them. I ask that everyone here tonight and those listening at home, make 2022 a time when our entire community can come together to lift up the students in this district. Let that be the headlines versus divisiveness. Now we move on to Dr. Schuler.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Crabtree. So just a few things that I have for the board this evening under, under my report. I actually have two parts to the report. One, just a few updates and announcements for you. And then two, I'm going to give you our, our monthly metric update related to COVID. So just to get us started, a couple of quick celebrations, pieces of information. I do have three very specific staff recognitions beyond, I think, kind of the, the broad thank you, Ms. Crabtree, that you offered. One I want to recognize, three people specifically, Matt Biskin, Phil Calcazi, and Rob Harvey. So Matt Biskin, principal at Wheaton North, right before winter break, was actually recognized by the DuPage Division of the Illinois Principals Association as the high school principal of the year in DuPage County. Matt is a tremendous asset to Wheaton North and to our community. We're incredibly proud of that recognition and accomplishment. Would like to bring Matt to a future board meeting for recognition, but just wanted to make sure that we mention that tonight. Rob Harvey is track cross-country coach at Wheaton Warrenville South. Over the weekend, was inducted into the Hall of Fame for track cross-country coaches. I think I shared with Rob as I, as I sent him a thank you this week. Lots of great memories in the district, but, but one of my most vivid memories was actually going to Peoria for the state cross-country meet. It was the year that Wheaton Warrenville South's boys won the state championship, but both teams were there. And I immensely enjoyed watching the students run and their passion, but watching the coaches and their level of passion, engagement. Mr. Harvey was just in tears at the end of the, the race, I think, with the culmination of the season. And I just think it, it really illustrated who he is as a coach and a person. So that was a huge honor and congratulations to him. And then finally, Phil Calcazi, who is Science Department Chair at Wheaton Warrenville South, got notice from the Regional Office of Education that he is a National Board Certified Teacher, and his National Board Certification was renewed this year. He's recognized a, a second time. So outstanding science teacher at the high school and leader, and just wanted to mention Phil. Ms. Crabtree, you mentioned the general staff thank you and kind of hinted at just one element in particular that I was going to mention. I had a, a great opportunity at Monroe to get a little inside view of the work that our staff were doing on Friday, as I had a chance to teach a sixth grade science class, really saw not only the, the work that the teacher in that classroom was doing to kind of leave behind a, a plan that I was capable of carrying out in middle school science, but, but also the work of the staff, really incredible. And I just had a blast with the kids. The kids were, were absolutely phenomenal. So again, I want to not just thank Monroe's staff, but all of our staff across the district that have really stepped up. We got some updated guidance right in front of the weekend from the Illinois State Board of Education IDPH that we shared with our families over the weekend, has helped with some pretty significant changes in modifying length, both of quarantine and isolation period. That has had an immediate impact for us. I think I had shared on Friday, that day I was subbing at Monroe. I think we had about 180 certified teachers that were out that day. And as a result of that updated guidance coming back, it's had a student impact, but I think we were down today to about 115 people out. And so it's really helped to ease some of that burden and strain, certainly on, on staffing. So we are continuing to, to move forward, obviously, with implementing those adjustments, certainly has helped here as we've navigated through. And then finally, I just want to mention that Five Essentials is a statewide school culture survey that the state funds and provides every year for all Illinois school districts. There's a component that students engage with. There's a component that staff engage with. And then there's a parent component of Five Essentials. Those survey windows are open, and we will begin sharing and communicating that information. But especially on the, the parent's side, we don't actually get and see data unless we have at least a 20% participation rate from our, our parent, our community. So really, as we begin to push that information out, we certainly hope that our, our community will engage and, and give us valuable feedback through Five Essentials. So I'm going to move in then to our COVID update, which, as you can imagine, has been a bit of a roller coaster, especially since we've come back from winter break. So presenting similar information that we had, have at each monthly meeting, and that's starting first with just cases per 100,000. That's actually community activity. And as you can see, as you look all the way over to the far, for me, the far right of the graph, we're at our peak in terms of what we're seeing in case activity within our community, just over 1,900 cases per 100,000, which, as you move then inside of our school buildings, we've certainly seen that reflected in both our student and our staff data. Last week, in the week we returned from winter break, we saw 400 and I think it's 18 cases thus far this week. We're about 301. Student cases had 83 staff cases last week, up to 35 at this point. So I guess the, the good news, while case activity is very high, is that we're seeing that at least kind of level off in consistency in terms of numbers rolling forward. And so certainly with that new guidance that's helped us to return both students and staff back to, to school, that's, that's helped a little bit. So this is just similar information kind of shown week to, to date, both in terms of our case data and our quarantine information. We still didn't see a significant number of student quarantines as a result of in-school close contact. Most of it has been as a result of out-of-school activities. One of the modifications, though, that did come with the new guidance actually allows us to expand some tests to stay within the, the school building. So again, we have continued to, to do that. You, you see on this chart that again, our in-school close contacts are really the things we have control over through our mitigations have remained relatively steady. And those are the students that we've been able to move through tests to stay in lieu of, of that quarantine. We've had 130, 135 students completely navigate that test-to-stay protocol. We've had a positivity rate in all of those tests we've administered of just over 2%. And then moving into our vaccination rate updates, and again, I just want to mention that this comes from data that we're able to pull out of iCare for our ZIP code. So there, there are some estimates, right, in this information, but reporting certainly for the first time, elementary vaccination data, we're about 55% of our elementary students that have received at least first dose of vaccine, 45% fully vaccinated, middle school level, or about 71% that have received first dose, 64% fully vaccinated. And then high school, we are just at 80% that have received first dose, 74% fully vaccinated. And then two final things I just want to mention, has been a challenge with the number, but we do continue to actively investigate any potential outbreak. Outbreak defined by any three cases linked within a school building. So each time we have that circumstance, and we've done quite a few, we do go in and look at circumstances and just make sure that we are not seeing vulnerabilities within our particular school system in any of those spaces. Have studied both HVAC systems to ensure we have proper airflow, looked at any mitigations that are in play within that room and adjusted if, if necessary. And again, I mentioned quite a few. We've actually investigated, documented a little over 1,000 instances that, that we've looked at, again, looked very carefully at, at any potential outbreak, partner with the DuPage County Health Department and that. And then finally, just want to mention that we have continued to look at the MIT tool, even with the uptick significantly in terms of, of cases. We continue to operate above that 18-hour threshold that, that we've looked at. A couple of things obviously have helped with that. The continued uptick, both in terms of vaccination and natural immunity, has certainly helped us even as cases have, have arisen. So again, kind of a, I mentioned a little bit of a roller coaster, you know, certainly appreciative of both our building staff or contact tracing teams that have been in, in full work here as we've transitioned back. Also want to thank our buildings that helped us quickly implement that new guidance over the weekend and welcome both students and staff back under that adjusted guidance that was a lift, and we're appreciative of that effort. So I will stop there. Answer any questions that board members have.
Questions or comments for Dr. Schuler?
Just one observation, kind of reflecting back on last school year and the ZIP code cases for 100,000. I mean, if you look at that number a year ago, everybody in DuPage County would have been doing remote learning. So the fact that we've continued to learn through the process, apply the mitigations that are required, and are keeping our kids in school is a testament to, I would say, not only our school district, but others' districts as well. So very unique situation compared to a year ago.
I have one question, Chris. I'm curious if we keep track of those students who are not required to quarantine but have been close contacts? Like, do we keep track of if they've gone on to test positive or become symptomatic?
Yeah, I think it's a fair question. Let me just make sure I understand. You're saying a, a student who was a close contact, but perhaps based on vaccination status, hasn't had to, to quarantine? Is that the, kind of the question? I don't track that specifically. So I don't have a, a, a number that I can give you in terms of what percentage have gone on to, to test positive. I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't even honestly want to try to take a guess at that.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay. We'll move on to public comment. In accordance with board policy 2.230, members of the public wishing to offer public comment have the opportunity to do so. A public comment signup sheet was made available until 7:00 PM. Board meetings are available for viewing via live stream on the district's YouTube channel. As with all comments, please be aware that it's the board's regular practice to not directly discuss, ask questions, or take action on public comments until the time has been taken to gather adequate information. The board is there to listen. Lack of action or direct response following public comments does not imply any lack of interest in what is being heard or shared. Per board policy 2.230, the time allotted for each person to speak during public comments may be shortened to two minutes. We're going to keep it at three since we only have eight public comments tonight. To preserve confidentiality, the board and its president request that items relating to either personnel or students be provided to the board privately or in writing for consideration in a future closed session if necessary. The board must protect the civility and decorum of the meeting. Please be respectful for the duties of the board, our district leadership team, and the democratic process in your public comment. Please include your name and whether you are a resident of the district. Please limit, limit your comments to three minutes. Mr. Hanlon will time the comments and raise his hand at the three-minute mark, which will conclude your comments. Please be factual and courteous and do not include statements that are personally disrespectful or condescending of the board or staff. So the first person is Mitch Stridel.
Good evening, board. Dr. Schuler. My name is Mitch Stridel, and I'm here tonight. I'm a parent of two children in the district. And I'm also an employee who works in the classroom at Wheaton Warrenville South High School. And I come here, you know, we've, we've talked, I know our board president mentioned kind of our hopes for 2022, and that's part of the reason I'm here this evening. And the, the plea I want to make, and it is a plea for 2022, is that as a board and as a district, that we can work to return our schools and our schoolchildren to normality. And that may seem like a, an odd plea with the current situation we're in, but if we look at the mountain of evidence that is publicly available, there's nothing really preventing us from a normal school experience. And we look across the country, probably 50% of schoolchildren have that experience currently. And there's no science to suggest that the metrics, the transmission of the virus is any different in those school environments compared to districts that have restrictions such as masks. And, and the plea to normality would be to have masks optional, to not focus on asymptomatic testing and quarantining, and to give back to our schoolchildren a more normal school experience. And I know there's a lot of pressures and risks that could be associated with that. And I know insurance companies and lawyers may tell you that we can't do that because we have a, a government mandate in our state. But I would like to point out that insurance companies and lawyers don't have the best interests of our kid at heart. That's not their job, and that's your job. And I know you do have the best interests of our kids at heart. And I can see from an employee who's in the school building that there's also a risk in continuing. also a risk in continuing on with these restrictions. And, you know, the evidence is coming out daily, and more evidence will come out this year. And we shouldn't think that our schoolchildren are immune from the risks and potential damages from those restrictions to their social, emotional well-being, which is just as important, and the experiences that they miss out on, which they don't get back as schoolchildren. And the science is pretty clear that their personal risk from this virus is minimal. And all the evidence continues to point to that, no matter the variant, no matter what it is. In our county, we don't have a single child under 18 who has died. They're at more risk getting in a car
Thank you.
with their parent. So my plea is just that we can return them because there is damage to their social, emotional, and I see it
Thank you, Mr. Stridel.
Thank you very much.
Next is Mr. Dave Muscana.
What name did you say? I want to make sure I'm the right person first.
Is it Muscana?
No, Dave Meisinga.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Okay, that's me. I'm second. Okay, thank you. Really extending on my fellow citizens' comments, I'm here representing myself as a Wheaton resident for 29 years, and also a group of non-public and private school parents that are organizing to communicate within our communities across the DuPage County and within our churches and parishes. And we too strongly request that you take a long look to adapt mask policies, to incorporate the latest information that's coming in the media from the CDC and from the Illinois Department of Public Health daily. Just today, IDPH said that, you know, the trend of the last three or four days is positive. And my question is looking at that chart, that trend would be alarming relative to policies that were in place a year ago. So their communications are inconsistent and really not following any kind of metric determination whatsoever. It's simply policy that coerces folks to follow the mandate as implemented by our governor and flowed down. And I encourage you all to take that power that you have. You're an empowered organization as a school board. You can basically put the policies in place and accept the consequences for it. And I encourage you to take that stand because children's mental health and their longitudinal educational access is going to have far greater ramification on each and every student than any given student that may suffer from the virus, which, as the gentleman before me mentioned, is effectively a zero death rate within our county and in most areas of the country. Our country is founded on subsidiarity, meaning we try to push decisions down to the smallest level possible, to the local level, so that we make the right decisions for our communities and our people. And those decisions can be made at the school board level. They can be made at the municipal level. They can be made at the county level. They can be made at the other state level or in this state level. We don't have to take federal guidelines. We don't have to take state guidelines. We have to make the decision that's right for our community based on what our community wants. We're not saying mask-free. We're asking for mask choice. If people are afraid, they should be able to wear masks. If people aren't afraid, they should be able to not wear masks. And it's going to improve the health and wellness and educational performance of these kids over the next two, three, four, five, 10, 15, 20, 50 years. You all know better than I do, you're educators. You set somebody back a grade or two, they don't make it up, especially people that are economically disadvantaged. You are harming people with these policies, and they need to be changed. And we just ask for you to take the courage to act on the power that you're given by the electorate.
Thank you.
And the last thing I would just add, if you don't mind, Illinois School District 256 voted to go mask optional in December.
Thank you, sir. Next up, Jessica Benasek.
Good evening, board. Dr. Schuler, thank you for having me. My name is Jessica Benasek, and I am a resident of the district. I have children in two different buildings here in the community. First, I'd like to thank all of you for your continued alignment with the public health entities during the ever-changing climate of this pandemic. No doubt that this has been a stressful 10 days, and I'd like to thank the administration for stepping into teaching roles and lending general support to your staff and teachers. The community climate regarding continued mitigation remains labile. The best way for you as our school leaders to calm the seas as we navigate this pandemic is to continue to present a united stance in regards to our mandates and our health mitigation strategies. So that we are clear, a large contingent of your community is in favor of continuing to weather this pandemic under the guise, guide of public health. I have prepared a statement that was signed by over 220 community members and students, and I'll present the written hard copy to you, and I'll email you for the record. I also just want to say that without everyone's help, we will only prolong this pandemic. And as I sit here in this meeting, there are people in this meeting that still cannot wear a mask, two years into this. This is an airborne virus, and it's not being addressed. There are people here even without masks on. And I just urge you to please continue to follow the mitigations that public health has put out. If we didn't have a mask mandate, our numbers would be double what we have kids out. They're helping. Excuse me, I'm speaking. So this is the statement that was signed by 220, over 220 community members. We, the undersigned, support current COVID-19 mitigations in community unit school district 200. We request that they remain in place to maximize the health and safety of school staff and students until the public health agencies, CDC, IDPH, ISBE, and/or the DuPage County Health Department deem it appropriate to reduce or remove them. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is David Soma.
Good evening. My name is David Soma. I live in Wheaton. My family has their deep roots here. I attended Wheaton College. My wife grew up, my wife Julie grew up in Wheaton and attended District 200 schools her entire life. Five of my children graduated from Wheaton North, and the sixth is currently a senior there. We love Wheaton North and are big fans of our principal, Matt Biskin. We have had a wonderful experience up to this point in District 200. However, we are convinced that the district's COVID policies are doing more harm than good. Now I quote, "The psychological damage of these lockdowns, this mask use, the school policies, the bullying of children who are unvaccinated, the psychological damage is huge. We're having a worldwide epidemic of suicide in children. We are having a huge surge of drug abuse in adolescents. We're having demonstrable drops in IQ and fundamental development milestones in the very young, like 20 IQ points. Children have to see faces and learn how to speak and to interact socially. We're raising a generation of children that have been blocked from their ability to assimilate the information necessary for them to become functional citizens and parents. We're destroying it without a second thought, and the damage is going to last for generations. And if that's not bad enough, we're allowing the state to insert itself into the family and make decisions by mandating vaccination." And I would add, including pushing childhood vaccination and mandating masks. That last paragraph quoted some of Dr. Robert Malone's words in his interview with Joe Rogan. If you have not listened to this podcast, I highly recommend it. He's not a fringe character. He's one of the top doctors in his specialty. The governor has overstepped his authority and is pushing bad science on our children. You, as school board members, have not been given power by Governor Pritzker. You have been given your authority by us, the parents of the children of District 200. We ask that you take action to protect our children from this unconstitutional overreach by the governor. We are now in the 23rd month of emergency orders. Our children are being gravely damaged by social distancing, mask-wearing, and vaccination pushing. You must act to protect our children from further harm. Thank you for listening.
Next is Kathleen Murphy.
Good evening. Last month when we were all here, one of the school board members, after listening to data about mental health statistics, said he was offended that we acted like he, that they didn't care about students because of going along with COVID policies. Well, just as an update, as it's been mentioned, we're now in our 23rd month of emergency orders, and you've upheld those orders, but you don't need to. There's been no effort by this board to take back local control from the state on COVID, on comprehensive sex ed. We're going to start talking about that in August, on any of the curriculum changes. To date, there have been zero deaths from COVID underage 20 in DuPage County. Just this week, Rochelle Walensky, the CDC director, said 75% of the deaths from COVID were the result of four or more comorbidities. We know masks don't work. Fauci said it in emails, but we continue to do this charade. This week, Geraldo, AOC, and our own Congressman Sean Casten, who are all vaccinated and boosted, announced they have COVID despite taking all the recommended precautions. This is, I mean, this is ridiculous. Omicron has a 91% lower chance of death, 72% less likely to be placed in the ICU with Omicron than Delta, 53% less likely to be hospitalized, according to a Kaiser Permanente study. I mean, it no longer makes sense to go along with the governor's orders. They're nonsensical, and continuing to quietly go along is choosing sides. Implementing the state, you can push back. Tom DeVore, who is suing this district on behalf of parents, posted today, "Are your public school districts aware that my three public school district clients have been operating all school year with a mask recommended policy without any consequences from ISBE? So you don't have to worry about consequences, and they'll continue to operate for the rest of the school year with a mask optional policy. None of the scare tactics have come to fruition. So what's your excuse?" And just remember, there was a time when this service was offered to you by Mr. DeVore, and this district refused. And so we continue to move forward towards state-run schools, move away from community-run schools. And I ask you to really rethink what course you're setting District 200 on.
Next up is Shannon Lyman.
Hi, my name is Shannon Lyman. I'm a parent of D200. I have two kids at the elementary level. I'm here tonight to talk about library books, but I would also just like to piggyback on what's been said so far. I mean, I think it was very clear that what the numbers that we have seen from COVID to date, that this is literally the definition of insanity. We're doing the same thing over and over again and expecting different results. Our county is one of the highest vaccinated in the country, yet we just saw astronomical numbers. So again, I just plead going forward to revisit that because our children are the ones that are suffering. Regarding library books, I know recently it's come to light that there have been some choice books that have been out there that potentially, not potentially, but quite frankly, we haven't even wanted passages read because it's completely inappropriate, yet they're exposed to our children. And one of the policies that we have is that students are prohibited from creating, distributing, and/or accessing at school any publication that is socially inappropriate or inappropriate due to maturity level of the students, including but not limited to material that is obscene, pornographic, or pervasively lewd and vulgar, contains indecent and vulgar language, or sexting, as defined by the Board of Education Policy and Student Handbooks. So if those policies are in place for those types of publications, how are we allowing a librarian to have the autonomy to bring in books without really having a group or something to be able to revisit these collectively as a district? So I just urge us that we revisit what the policy is for books coming into the district and that we're able to put together some type of committee or anything so that we're able to really evaluate that, and rather than just letting one person make those decisions. Thank you.
Next up is Ryan Kipfer.
My name is Ryan Kipfer. I'm a Wheaton resident. I would have three kids in District 200, but because of the current school environment, they are all in homeschool or a co-op. There's a couple of things I wanted to talk about, but limited to three minutes. We talk about following the science. I won't jump over that too much, but the World Health Organization, which isn't exactly a fringe right-wing organization, has very different mask recommendations from the CDC. There's no reason why you would have to follow the CDC's guidelines. It's been over a year that the World Health Organization has advised to never mask children under five. And as far as the masks go, and you can look at that, it's on their website. As far as the mask goes, someone commented earlier that the rate would be double. People say things like that all the time. Oh, well, thank goodness they mask, otherwise the infection rates would be out of control. But what's the evidence for that? The answer is, there's none. There's plenty of states you can look at. You can look at Ohio. You can look at Florida. You can look at South Dakota. And those are just the ones that come to my mind as I'm standing here. Their rates aren't higher. Their infant mortality, or I'm sorry, their child mortality rates aren't higher. It's just simply not true. The masks don't do anything to help. They don't help at all. It's not even how it works. I mean, why do you see NFL players running off the side of the field when it's four degrees below zero? All the steam's coming out of their mouths through their mask. Well, we know what that is. Why do your glasses fog up when you walk out in the cold? That's because it's coming out of your mask. The mask doesn't really do anything. So I think, you know, we've kind of been down this path a few thousand times, saw this move on. If I have any time left, I want to get back to something I brought up last month, and it doesn't seem to be getting the traction I was hoping for. It's the topic of what people will call book banning. I just want to say, it's not book banning, putting, using discretion as to what books go into schools. It's not book banning. It's just simply not. You know, the book that everyone hints at and pushes, you know, dances around is gender queer. And if you look at the pictures in there, we're not going to, we don't have to pretend like they're not there. There's a drawing of a girl giving another girl fellatio who's wearing a male prosthetic. That's what's in the book. We can stop pretending like it's, well, we're trying to help kids who are going through a hard time or maybe having different gender issues. There's ways to address that. That's with your counselor. It's not with the library, with books, with cartoon drawings of very explicit vulgar sex acts. And to pretend like it's something else is another ruse, that these people are pushing on you and you're going along with. And finally, with the governor's mandates, I believe 90 or 120 days into this mask mandate thing, the Illinois Supreme Court found these mandates unconstitutional. So you can also look it up. Have a good night.
Next, last up is Mr. Lefito.
My name's Mike Lefito. I have three kids in the district. And first off, I want to thank Dr. Schuler. I sent an email yesterday. It was pretty thorough, and you got back to me thorough answers, so I do appreciate that. And I also appreciate you stepping up, as well as others in the district, as teachers have been sick the past week. So thank you. Mr. Paulson, you brought up some data, which I appreciate. A year ago, if they showed that data, you're exactly right, we probably wouldn't be in school. But we also know, a year later, we too have learned more about this virus. So I'm not going to reiterate a lot of the same items that others brought up. But in my email to you, Mr. Schuler, I did talk about kids' mental health. And last month, at this board meeting, there was about three times as many people here, and on both sides, people talked about mental health. And what I was referring to in my email was the mental health that these kids' childhoods are being robbed because of the mask. A young lady spoke earlier that people, somebody wasn't wearing a mask. And I looked around when she stated that, and there was, everybody was wearing a mask. I would challenge this school board and district to ask the kids. Let's send a survey out to the kids. My fourth-grade daughter- My fourth-grade daughter, who's got pimples on her nose because of the mask. My fifth-grade son, who fights me every day to go into school because he's sick and tired of wearing the mask. Let's ask the kids about the mask, how that's doing for their mental health, how that's doing on, are they positive, are they looking positively at their future in next year junior high, or the junior high kids? I'd like a survey to go out to our students. It could be anonymous, but I'd like questions to be asked them about the mask and their everyday, and their thoughts on the mask. My son will flat-out tell you, he wears his mask around his chin. Some others wear it around their head. Kids could get vaccinated, they can wear eight masks if they want. So again, trust the science they said early on. While the data's suggesting other, and I just would appreciate if you guys consider taking the kids' feelings, the kids' thoughts into these, because, again, do the pros of a mask outweigh the cons? What we do know is there's been zero deaths of 20-year-olds and younger. What we don't know is the long-term ramifications, that these masks and the limitations on their childhood are put on. So I do appreciate everybody's time. I appreciate your promptness, appreciate your willingness to step up. You guys are in a difficult position. I understand that, but leaders need to take a stand and sometimes make difficult decisions. You know, Steve Jobs once said, "If you want to make everybody happy, sell ice cream." Well, even if you sold ice cream, people would be unhappy about the flavors. I would ask you, and I appreciate you speaking up last month, I would ask the school board members to consider the kids' mental health that the masks are causing. We flatten the curve. We're on year three. There's plenty of dad out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next up is our...
Before we go on, I got it. One of the references made was to School District 256. I just wanted to tell the board that's St. Dan's School District, a small elementary district of about 280 kids, kind of between Kenkekee and the Indiana border. I called them myself and confirmed what was said, so thank you for actually giving the name of a school district. We don't get that very much. I will note that the High School District in St. Dan, which is a different district, is not mask optional. It's fully following the mandate. And then, another point that, you know, we're going to get blasted by email for letting people say that masks don't work. I just want to unequivocally say from my personal opinion, yeah, masks don't work implies that they're perfect. I don't think masks are perfect, but they certainly help as one layer of additional mitigation. So that's just my opinion. I just wanted to make that comment to the board before we go on to the next agenda item.
Thank you. Next up is the consent agenda. Approval of standards for high school dual-credit course, Introduction to Teaching 1 and 2. Approval of standards for high school course, Advanced Learning, Introduction to Acting. Approval of standards for high school course, Advanced Placement, Spanish Literature and Culture. Approval of standards for high school course, Advanced Placement, Art History. Approval of mileage reimbursement rates for 2022. Approval to open previously closed minutes. Approval of bills payable and payroll. Approval of minutes, December 8, 2021, open, and approval to destroy recordings of closed sessions prior to August 2020 as allowable by law. Approval of personnel report to include employment, resignation, retirement, and leave of absence of administrative-certified and non-union staff. Are there any items board members want removed from the consent agenda? Dr. Schuler, any other information?
No additional information.
Okay. Are there any questions, board members? Hearing none, I ask for a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Booton. Second by Mr. Hanlon. Mrs. Hutchinson, will you call the roll?
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay, the motion, the consent agenda passes. Next up is the policy posting consent agenda. There are 33 items. This will be very long. The following 33 revised policies are for approval to post for public review and comments. 2.105, ethics and gift ban.
Mrs. Crabtree, I think you just need to read the numbers. You don't have to read the entire title. Just the numbers and the manual.
Okay, thank you. 2.105, 2.110, 2.120, 2.20, 2.220, 2.260, 3.40, 3.50, 3.60, 4.160, 4.175, 4.60, 5.20, 5.200, 5.220, 5.30, 6.120, 6.135, 6.15, 6.20, 6.220, 6.300, 6.340, 7.10, 7.150, 7.250, 7.260, 7.30, 7.310, 7.340, 7.345, 7.70, and 7.80. Are there any items board members want removed from the policy posting consent agenda? Dr. Schuler?
Yeah, just want to remind the board, your policy committee reviewed all of these policies in depth at a policy committee meeting. This is about actually half of the changes that have come forward recently as a result of a very active legislative session last year that brought about a number of changes in policy. So these are being recommended tonight for approval to post, and then we'll come back at your next meeting for approval. But they were all reviewed and recommended from policy committee.
Are there any questions or comments?
Chris, I have a comment. Policy 7.30, student assignment and intra-district transfer. I still wonder if we could tweak the language, just I feel it's not clear that both items 1 and 2 would be presented to the board. I don't know if, I think, I don't anticipate there would be any issue with it, but because it is policy, I just don't feel like it reads clearly if that makes sense.
Can you repeat the number? Yep. So clarity, I think the concern point is that, as a superintendent, I cannot approve a boundary change. I would not approve a boundary change. That's going to come to the board for your ultimate approval, but I think, this is a blatant concern, is in the way that it reads, it looks like the first of those two items requires board approval. The second criteria would allow me a boundary change outside of the board thing. I don't believe that's the intent of the way that that policy is written, but I certainly want to make it expressively clear both to the board and to the community that certainly the intent is not to give me latitude to make boundary changes without bringing that to the board.
When the policies are proposed from Press Plus, those have gone through legal channels in terms of creating the language?
There is, so Press does have a policy team that includes both attorneys as well as educational leaders from kind of a variety of sectors. So there is a team that has reviewed them and, you know, that obviously brings that recommendation forward, but...
I don't know which number we're talking about.
Which number?
7.30, the one on student assignment and transfers that talked about boundary, the process for boundary adjustment.
Angela, your position is it's just not clear?
I feel it's not clear. It says, the school district is divided into school attendance areas. The superintendent will, one, review the boundary lines annually and recommend to the school board any changes or revisions for existing units, or, like, I think it's the "or," create new units using a lens that considers preventing segregation. And it reads on, I don't know if maybe it should read, "The superintendent will review the boundary lines annually and recommend to the school board," and then maybe have, one, any changes or revisions for existing units, or create new units. Like, I think the recommendation to the school board should encompass both, but it seems as though it's only under point one. And I don't anticipate that it would be an issue, but I think because it is policy, we should, it should read clearly. But it seems clear to everyone else, then so be it.
Dr. Schuler, just to reiterate, you're not able to unilaterally change boundaries.
I know. I do not believe that the policy gives me that, but I want to make sure that the policy is clear. Again, I will say this, two things. One, there is not an immediate urgency around this policy, understanding that there's another round. And so, given the feedback, and I think it's a fair question, you know, one alternative I might suggest is just pull that one for tonight. Let's take it back to policy committee as we review the others to kind of review that feedback and make sure we're comfortable with what comes back. There's obviously not a boundary change process or recommendation coming forward in the next couple of months, so I don't think it's of urgency that this get posted tonight if the board is comfortable with the policy committee taking this feedback and going back and taking one more look at it.
I think we should...
I appreciate the feedback.
Thank you.
So if we pull it, we just need to revise the motion for 32.
Yep. We just revise the motion and remove that policy for tonight.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I just had a comment, and it's a really tiny comment on 4.160, environmental quality of buildings and grounds. Under, there's an added statement under pesticides that restricted-use pesticides will not be applied on or within 500 feet of school property during normal school hours. I don't know, does that suggest that we need to, what is, within 500 feet of school property suggests that off-school property? We have a policy that controls what happens off of school property. I just think the language, it's minor, we can do it the next meeting, but I just think it needs to be applied on school property during normal school hours.
And I think there...
Maybe I didn't say that right. It just says on or within 500 feet of school property. I don't know how we control within 500 feet. That's my point.
And I would agree with what Brad said. How do we control something that's not our property? Like, if it's within, there are instances where property bets up to us that would be within 500 feet, so we couldn't have that control.
I'm just suggesting it's a minor, minor, we need to take out three words. We don't need to do it tonight. We can do it...
I say, why don't we pull that one as well?
Yes, I'd say, let's just be consistent then. If you want us to review that one, let's take that one back too.
So we're going to pull number 10, and we're going to pull number 28.
Eight, correct.
Are there any other questions or comments from board members? Okay. So, I'd like, let's see here, a motion and a second to approve the policy posting consent agenda minus 4.160 and 7.30.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Hanlon.
Second.
Second by Mr. Long. Mrs. Hutchinson, will you call the vote?
Yes.
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 Yes. Is an action item, adoption of resolution to begin the 2022-2023 budget cycle. Dr. Schuler?
Yep, I'm going to hand it over to Dr. O'Keefe. Got any comments that you want to make that just kind of launches this, so...
Yep, this is an annual request that we bring to the Board of Education in January. The resolution allows us to begin working with your approval on our budget for our next year. That's the whole purpose behind it, and that's part of school code that we must ask for your permission on an annual basis.
Are there any questions or comments for Dr. O'Keefe?
Just that the process is laid out in the attachment, and I thought it was a really nice job.
Okay. Hearing no questions or comments, I ask for a motion and a second to adopt the resolution to begin the 2022-2023 budget cycle as presented and designate Dr. Brian O'Keefe to prepare the 2022-2023 budget.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Paulson.
Second.
Mrs. Booton, Mrs. Hutchinson, will you call the vote?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Next up is oral reports. The first one is our student learning feature. Dr. Schuler?
I'm going to welcome up to the podium Dr. Pueyo, who is our director of multilingual learners and equity. So I'm going to take the board back a few meetings, and there was a question about BIPAC, our Bilingual Parent Advisory Council, what that was, kind of what they do. And so, Dr. Pueyo is actually here tonight to give the board that update, as well as some of the activities that have been taking place this year. Do you need this?
Good evening. It's a pleasure to be here today. So today's presentation is going to talk about BIPAC, which stands for our Bilingual Parent Advisory Committee. And the guiding questions that are going to be discussed in this presentation are, what is the demographic makeup of our multilingual learners? What are the requirements and goals of BIPAC? What events are scheduled for this school year? And how do we plan to gather input from our bilingual Spanish parents and caregivers? And how are we going to utilize that information? So I'm going to begin with sharing information on enrollment on our multilingual learners. Currently in our district, we have over 1,000 multilingual learners. That represents 10% of our enrollment. The majority of our students are at the elementary level, so as you can see in the graph, 60% of our multilingual learners are elementary level. We have various languages represented in our program. Our top five native languages are Burmese, I'm sorry, in order, our top five, the first, with over 50% of our students speaking this language is Spanish, followed by Burmese, Arabic, Shinaka, and then Nepali. We have programming that supports our Spanish-speaking students in 11 of our schools. We're required to provide transitional bilingual education programming when we have a school that has reached an enrollment of 20 students who speak the same native language. And so on this slide, you are going to see the 11 schools that have a transitional bilingual education program, also referred to as TBE. And you can see the percentage of our multilingual students that speak Spanish that are enrolled in those schools. I also want to point and highlight that we do have two schools whose enrollment is over 80% that speak Spanish, that is Johnson and Hubble Middle School. The next question that we're going to discuss is the requirements and goals of BIPAC. Districts who have TBE programs are required to have a bilingual parent advisory committee, and we refer to it as BIPAC. And to meet the requirements of BIPAC, the committee must consist of bilingual program parents, guardians, teachers in our bilingual schools, counselors, and community members. They must meet at least four times a year. The purpose is to review and provide recommendations regarding multilingual learning programming and spending. Our goals for our BIPAC are to promote participation from parents and caregivers. Our goals for our BIPAC are to promote participation from parents and caregivers. We wanna provide parents and caregivers the opportunity to express their views about the programs and services that we offer our multilingual students in the district. We also provide educational workshops to families that help support the social, emotional, and academic needs of our multilingual learners. I am gonna introduce the events that we have scheduled for the, for this school year. We had two events, one in October, which provided parents with information on tools for managing challenging times. And that was in October, held at Johnson Elementary. And then we also had another parent workshop that was held at Pleasant Hill. And the topic was discipline without tears, effective parenting strategies. We have three additional upcoming events and you can see the, the topics there, but we have an event scheduled in January, March, and May, and they alternate between Johnson and Pleasant Hill Elementary Schools. Our final question is how do we plan to gather input from our bilingual Spanish-speaking parents and caregivers and how we're gonna utilize that input? If you look at your green folders, you're gonna notice that you have a copy of a parent survey that was sent home to parents, to Spanish-speaking families at our bilingual sites. This was sent in December. The purpose of the survey was to gather parent voice on programming and supports that are in place for multilingual students, sense of belonging and connectedness to their student school community, feeling valued as a partner in their students' learning, and the effectiveness of our communication efforts. The data collected is gonna be used to analyze our current practices and also make recommendations to improve the experiences of our, of our multilingual families in the district. The surveys were provided to parents. They were paper surveys and so we are currently in the process of analyzing those results. And that is it. So thank you.
Doctor Pueyo, I, just two quick questions for, for clarification.
Yes.
You know, kind of going even all the way back to the, the enrollment in our multilingual program. So our bilingual students are our multilingual students. What is the assessment that they take that kind of gives the district a sense of progress that they're making in terms of acquiring English, right? That kind of strand of their learning?
Yeah, so every year, students take the access exam and that measures students' growth in the four different language domains. So they're assessed in speaking, reading, writing, and listening. And we actually just entered our testing window. Today was the first day of our testing window and students will be assessed for the next four weeks. And all students are assessed in grades K through twelve.
And so regardless of where a student kind of tests via access, right? Whether they are truly a, a kind of very beginning stages of acquiring language to like nearing kind of transition phase out of the program, the students regardless have to take the core state assessments in English, both for ELA and math. Is that, is that true?
Correct.
There's no, no accommodation kind of within the state assessment program?
There, there are some accommodations for students depending on the exam, but students are expected to take all of the state assessments.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for Doctor Pueyo?
I have a couple. Go ahead, Dave. First question is for the surveys that were distributed, about how many did you get back, if you know?
We got eighty back and we distributed them to the, to our multilingual students that were in the eleven bilingual sites. So we did have a pretty good rate of return. The process for collecting the data is a bit slower because they weren't electronic and so we're inputting all of that into a spreadsheet. And just from previous experiences, when we do surveys electronically, we don't, didn't necessarily get a very good turnaround. And so the fact that we were able to send it home with students in their folder at the elementary level and teachers followed up, we were able to get those returned.
And then on the events that already took place in October and November, were those in-person events?
Yes, all of the events are in-person and the ones that we had were in-person as well. We had from, anywhere from, the last two events, we had fifteen families in the first event and about twenty families that participated in the second event.
That was really my question, so that.
Okay.
Thanks for, thank you.
No problem.
Other questions or comments?
Yeah, I'm, I'm going back to the slide that's on the screen, actually. So the, the percentages around there, are those of all students at elementary or of multilingual?
Just students in our program. And just the breakdown, that just shows you the breakdown of like where students are.
So tell me how you came up with the percentage? What numbers were divided?
So this is, I'm sorry, so this is the total number of students that we have in the program and it is just split by which grade level they're in. I don't know if that makes.
It makes sense, yes.
Sense.
Yep. Okay. And then, were, were the surveys distributed to the eleven hundred and seventy-seven students?
No, we only distributed the surveys to our Spanish-speaking students at these eleven schools. And the reason we did that is because this was part of our BIPAC and BIPAC is a required component for our bilingual sites. And we only have eleven bilingual sites, which are the ones on this slide.
Right. Thank you.
Other questions or comments?
I have one. Well, first of all, thank you very much for the information. I really appreciate it. The events that you have here, are those also the meetings? The, the meetings for four times a year where families give, as you, you know, we see here, the, give the feedback and, you know, recommendations? Or are those separate from the events?
These are separate. We do meet with the, we, we meet with a, with a group separately. These are the workshops that we have that are open to all of the parents.
Okay, okay. And then how many are on the actual committee?
On the committee, we had eight families participate in our last committee meeting.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? I, I have one.
Yeah.
So I see Burmese is our second top in about, almost about seven percent of the multilingual learners. Are we close in any building to having twenty?
Johnson currently has fifteen and that's the building that's the closest. I do monitor the numbers on a monthly basis, just so that if, you know, we do get close to that, then we would be expected to provide a bilingual program in Burmese and provide staff that speak that native language. To support the students.
I was just gonna say, are we keeping that kind of on a radar if we're getting close? Because I would, I would think that that might be a challenge in terms of finding someone who is bilingual.
Correct.
Yeah. Thank you. That was my only question. Thank you.
I have a few. I just wanna clarify, are you using the terms bilingual and multilingual interchangeably?
Yes, I am.
Okay. So is possible that we could consider removing the term bilingual as it, bilingual, multilingual encompasses it and recognizes that many bilingual children are also multilingual?
Correct. So ISB uses the term bilingual to refer to the programming when you have twenty or more students that speak the same native language. And so they, that's the term that ISB uses with respect to their programming, so.
Okay. Another one, just to clarify, from the chart that Rob referenced earlier, there's one thousand one hundred and seventy-seven students in our district who are multilingual and in receiving services.
Correct.
So we, there are also students in our district who speak multiple languages and also have a command of the English language that doesn't impede their academic growth in English.
Correct. This just includes the students that we provide direct services for. We also have students that have exited that we provide, that we monitor for two years. And then obviously students that were in our program and then eventually transitioned out that still, you know, are, speak different, a different language.
Mm-hmm. Okay. And then, do you have any idea how the BIPAC feels about the FLESS programming at those same schools?
I do not. That is not a question that was brought up, but in one of our, in a follow-up meeting that we have, I can definitely present that information to them and get their feedback.
They're different.
I'm sorry?
They're totally different programs, but they are sort of connected because they end up being at the same schools.
Correct.
For now, due to the population.
Yeah, they were, so we did present the program to them. We explained the program, how it's offered and the support, but did not necessarily receive any specific feedback from parents.
And then I think my last question is, was this survey distributed, you might have said it, in English?
No, both, English and Spanish.
Okay.
I provided you with an English version, just because I.
Could be.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I, can I just quickly clarify, just, just so that we get, are careful with the acronym use? So FLESS that Doctor Boi asked about is the foreign language elementary school model that was put in place this year at Johnson and Pleasant Hill as a model to support our, our bilingual students, but kind of broaden that experience. So just, just so there's no lack of clarity of what, what that is. That was the new model this year, so.
Correct. And we've referred, we've been referring to it as Spanish Language Arts, all instruction, so, yeah.
Any other questions or comments?
I just have one comment. And thank you for the presentation. That was very nice. And just personal experience, I worry that, I, I'd love to see that we're trying to embrace the families and parents of multilingual learners. I hope we, we reach all those we can. And just one thing that I know I run into personally with bilingual, multilingual families, sometimes in sending out something, even if it's translated into Spanish, they may not be able to even read in Spanish. And I feel like those are the parents that are really, you know, lost. They, I don't know, I don't know what the answer is, how to reach them, but I, I know that they would love to be embraced by, you know, being part of the community and part of the school, but it's hard to reach them. So I don't know if that, just offering that insight.
No, thank you for that feedback. I definitely, I know that sometimes when we do send some communication, some parents might not necessarily, you know, be able to read it. We also do have a parent liaison that we do tap into and whenever we do send information home where we know that there may be a challenge, that parent does, the parent liaison, that's the name of the title, they speak Spanish, they're housed at Johnson and Pleasant Hill. And so they're able to, for example, just read out the information for parents and versus them, you know, if it's an electronic form or something, or if it's something paper, they would read it to parents and then get their input over the phone or in person. So we try to utilize like a, a human to, to get some of that input.
More quick comment based on that. I wonder whether, I noted one place it refers to bilingual parents. Sometimes our parents are, are, speak one language and it's not English. So if we continue to think or call all of our parents bilingual or multilingual and they're actually not, we might miss that actually their English level requires some attention in terms of parent communication. But I think it's a similar train of thought of, they're not necessarily bilingual just because their kids are bilingual.
Correct.
Or we know that.
Correct. Yeah, and I, as I mentioned earlier, the word bilingual just referring to the program that they're in, they're bilingual, they're in the bilingual program, so our parents of the bilingual program.
There we go. Their parents of kids enrolled in our bilingual.
Yes.
That's good, thank you.
Any other questions or comments for Doctor Pueyo? I'd just like to ask for in the future, can we find out more about the FLESS program? I did have the opportunity to go visit FLESS at Pleasant Hill, but just to, you know, how are we measuring that, looking at that? Are we looking then at an expansion of that? You know, maybe later in the year, if we could just have a, an update on that.
Yeah, definitely.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Next up is Portrait of a Graduate. I see Doctor Slaggy's walking up.
Doctor Slaggy's gonna make his way up to the, to the podium. So bringing the board tonight, an update on Portrait of a Graduate work and, and really more so than an update, it's, it's kind of a transition, right, for, for us as we present to you the, the final outcome of the Portrait of a Graduate and then begin transitioning into strategic planning conversation based on that. So Doctor Slaggy, go ahead.
Thank you, Doctor Schuler. Good evening, members of the Board of Education. Just wanna draw your attention, in your packets, you actually have a, a full handout of the, of the presented Portrait of a Graduate, if you wanna refer to that as well as we go through the presentation. Yeah, tonight, really excited to, to present our Portrait of a Graduate to you as well. So before we get there, I will start with just two common slides that we're familiar with, but I do think it's important for us just to create a little context and remind us why the project of developing a Portrait of a Graduate came about and, and the purpose behind it. Really four key points. This is an opportunity for our school community to give input and express what their aspirations are for all of our kids and, while also prioritizing the essential skills and qualities that they want for our kids, while putting the student at the heart of the work. And then the last piece, what we'll end on, will be, this is actually the blueprint, right? And can serve as the focal point for moving us forward in our strategic action and planning. Little bit of background, how did we come to this point where we're presenting our Portrait of a Graduate to you, right? You all know, June two thousand nineteen, all the way till March twenty twenty, we launched a pretty aggressive input process where we met with people in, in person, presented to several community and school groups, utilized a thought exchange question, and really got a lot of quality input around what was desired from our community for our graduates. We obviously took that pause and the summer came back to that work and really, really dove right in, launching a new question, saying, hey, here were the themes that we had, but what's missing? What have we learned new? What do we want for our kids new? We asked that of our students, our staff, our parents, our business community. We also asked people to prioritize the themes that we, that emerged from our previous input session from June twenty nineteen to March twenty twenty. We put together a new design team, members that were on our previous one, as well as new, new folks as well. And we utilized that design team pretty closely, not only at the onset of the process, but also to help facilitate a community engagement night. And then as we came forward with our draft and we started narrowing down the competencies and the descriptors, we went back to that design team again to hear inputs. So it's through all that compilation that, that we come to a final Portrait of a Graduate. And as we previewed in December for you, the five emerging competencies start with academically excellent. You see that at the heart of our work, our community, and in the heart of our work is student learning. And then around it, you see communicator, problem solver, collaborator, and resilient. Since you've got a two-page document there, I think it's important for us to look at the descriptors around these. And the first note that I wanna make is that these descriptors are not descriptors that were thought up or created by an individual person, by our, by our senior leadership team. They're really a representation of the input and the feedback that we've gotten through all the processes that I highlighted earlier. Through the input and the feedback we got in our thought exchanges, through our design team, through the lens of our administrative team, through multiple iterations, we came to these descriptors, right? And so just a, a summary of these descriptors, right? Again, you'll see academics right at the foundation, at the heart of our work. We recognize that in our schools and our community told us that that was an important value and an important piece, right? You'll see around, surrounding that though, our other four pieces, really, really vital to not only supporting learning or supporting academic excellence, but actually enhancing. So really, they work to complement each other. While communicator, problem solver, collaborator, these types of things sometimes can really, can work in isolation, they're only more enhanced when they're integrated into the school experience to, to improve learning, to increase learning, to enhance learning. So, so really, you, you see. So, so really, you, you see, you can see our definitions here, but the work really starts here as well, right? We have next steps planned, we want to talk through those. This serves as symbolism right now, but we've got work ahead of us. We've gone through the process to identify what, what the community values, what, what our, what our staff values. We've been thorough in that process, but now it's really about the next steps. Where do we go from here? And how does this not, not only serve as a document, but something that's a blueprint for our, our work moving forward? So, I, I will pause there just on the Portrait of a Graduate as itself, before we talk about, before I turn over to Dr. Schuler to talk about next steps in strategic planning. So, any questions about our process, or what's presented in front of you?
I just have one, one quick comment. I was at the December 13th final, I think it was, the design team meeting at We North, and just to echo what Dr. Slagi said, these, these statements below these kind of four other words were, were pretty well nuanced, in terms of specific language, should there be a comment here? So, those are, just examples of how these are very finely crafted statements to try to capture a lot of the other elements of the, of the plan and the conversation that led up to it. So, I, I think this is really good succinct summary of everything, and the one thing that I would say is, you know, I think the, the foundation of this is all academics, right? So, kind of traditional, traditional learning is all about sharing knowledge and making sure our students have the knowledge they need to proceed to the next level as well as in, in life. And then the other four items are really all about those skills, and I've talked a little bit about skills over the, several years, and those skills are things that we see in business, we, we hear from, from other school districts that everybody's trying to build around. So, it's really about the combination of having that foundational knowledge of, of academics with the skills around it to make our students prepare, be prepared for the workforce for the next, for the future. So, I think it's a, a very well crafted and nuanced language that we can build upon, which I think is the next step.
Other questions or comments?
Yeah, really great, great work, right? We've had a long time, last stops, a few stops and starts. Great engagement across the board. And I just want to pivot a little bit on what Brad was saying about words. I think, I just don't understand one phrase, and it's, resilient learner is someone who responds to challenges by engaging in productive struggle. I don't know what that is.
Yeah. You know, we talk a lot in our schools about the, kind of the, the zone or the time when learning is happening, right? And many times, learning is happening when there's a little bit of a struggle, where there's like a little bit of a challenge, right? And that's, that, that struggle or that challenge is actually productive because growth is occurring, right? So, so that's how we'd best get at it, is that you're responding and you're, you're really taking on a challenge that's slightly hard, instead of shutting down, you're, you're powering through, you're, you're productively struggling to learn and grow.
So, is, this is going to be a little detailed, but is productive struggle a condition? Is it a circumstance? I'm not, I'm still not grasping it. I understand the intent, the words themselves, though. After you explain it, I get it, but the words don't necessarily mesh right off the page.
Yeah. I, I would say that it, productive struggle is, it's, it's an action.
It's what?
It's an action.
Action?
Yeah. You're, you're actively struggling through, working through that terminology, albeit maybe a little educational in, in its pieces, that a little bit of that struggle is producing learning, so.
I would, I would also say though, Rob, that I think it, it is an action that's a result of that circumstance, that circumstance being appropriately differentiated learning, right, that requires all kids to experience that productive struggle, right? Like, learning should be hard, right, for, for students at some point, and that comes through appropriately challenging tasks, but also making sure that we differentiate and scale learning appropriately for students. I think it speaks to opportunities that exist currently and in some kind of like, like leveled and appropriately leveled experiences, whether that be inside the classroom, through a PACE-type program, through an advanced placement, college-level opportunity, right? I think, I think it is an action that comes through a circumstance you create through your programs.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions or comments before Dr. Slagi continues?
So, kind of in thinking about that, which I hadn't really looked that closely at that particular phrase, productive struggle, but I almost wonder, is it repetitive and, and meaning also the process of effortful learning? Like, productive struggle and effort, effortful learning seem, I mean, I guess the struggle doesn't have, well, yeah. So, just a thought.
I just want to say, I, I, again, thank you for this, I, I think it's great. I think it, you know, is very descriptive in what we're looking for in our students. I, personally, I don't have an issue with the resilient definition, just because I'm going through this with my kids right now, where they are in school, where things are becoming more challenging, and they're having to work through things that, I actually have this conversation with, with one of my children frequently about what this means, and, and how you have to work through something, and sometimes it's difficult, and, you know, and my husband and I both try to model, like, when we are learning something new or going through something and it doesn't work out, like, this is how you look at it, and you can get frustrated, but then this is how you move through it and try to keep figuring it out. So, I just, I just want to say, I, I like the definition of it, I understand it. You know, I don't know, just like I said, because I, we have these conversations at home a lot, but, but I do understand, you know, what, where the other comments that were made. But again, I just want to say thank you. I know this has been a long time, you know, a long process, and I think we've really ended up in a really great place. So, thank you for all the work.
The process has had some productive struggle.
Correct.
So, can we, can we move forward into just the last slide to kind of forecast strategic plan development for you right now? So, obviously, you know where we are at this point in time, we have a Portrait of a Graduate, both that Portrait of a Graduate and our existing dashboard, our, our existing metrics that we've used to build our learning acceleration plan and focus are really gonna, gonna drive us moving forward. So, anticipate bringing to you a strategic plan that really encompasses or incorporates two elements again, right? Both a plan itself that identifies specific strategies we want to address over the next four to five years to address both our goal through the Portrait of a Graduate, as well as opportunities for students, but then also a dashboard that clearly allows you as a board and our community to especially measure kind of that, what's at the, the heart in the blue out of this Portrait of a Graduate, and that's how are we doing in terms of academic progress or creating students that are academically excellent. So, I anticipate your strategic plan having both a dashboard again that clearly identifies the, the metrics that you'll measure through the system and our community will, and a plan document that, that clearly identifies strategy. Through the months of January and February, we anticipate developing a draft of that based on input certainly from all of our administrative team. Through March and April, we're proposing that we would take that back out to another listening tour and utilize a number of our already engaged groups, such as, as Citizens' Advisory Committee, our Chamber of Commerce, a number of our other existing community partnerships, our PTA Council, some open parent engagement sessions like we did with the Portrait of a Graduate. So, it would not keep anybody out of the process that wanted to, but that that listening tour would be very much responding to, here's a draft, tell us a, what you like, what you don't like, what we've missed, right, in the, in the strategic plan. We'd anticipate in that March-April timeframe as well of working with a number of our board committees to look specifically at strategies within the, the related areas so that we could bring back to the board in May, a draft of, of the strategic plan that would, would give the board both May and June to hopefully refine and be comfortable with the, the new strategic plan that would, would be in to guide your work through the summer and into next school year. So, I guess, just, just wanted to kind of share that with the board. The one other thing I would encourage the board to do for your February meeting is that when you look now at the Portrait of a Graduate piece, I would also encourage you in your green folders is a copy of your current vision, mission, belief statements, right, that were approved by the, the board back when they were developed. As I kind of took an initial look at both that vision, mission, belief statement, I actually do think largely they're still very well aligned to this visioning activity that you just did, but this is our time moving into, to February just to take a look at that, and for you, obviously, as a governing board, to determine if you want to make any kind of tweaks or adjustments to it. Certainly, you can redevelop them wholesale, but my, my anticipation is that they may be kind of minor tweaks. So, I wanted to give you a copy of that vision, mission, belief statement now so that over the next month, you can kind of look at it next to the, the Portrait of a Graduate and just come prepared in, in February that we can, we can have that discussion early in the process as well. So, I'll stop and answer any questions just on kind of proposed process.
Okay. It's back on the other slide, though, because I just had some clarifying questions on the definitions of academics and learning. How is core academic content defined again?
Core academic content is defined by our learning standards, right, that identify grade level appropriate content that's measured.
Okay. And mastery is defined how?
Mastery is defined by, so it depends, I guess, on the assessment that you're using to, to define mastery for, if it's, if it's a local assessment, we've set a standard for acceptable mastery of that content. If it's a state assessment, the state has built that definition.
So, for example, well, I know that the state standards are, cover all of the courses we teach, so everything, every class is a core, has core ac, is, is considered core academic content, from the arts to PE.
I guess, yes and no. I mean, not, not every content area is assessed on our core assessments, both district assessment and state focus on kind of core areas of math and, and ELA, and then science at the, at the state level. So, no, I wouldn't necessarily say that every elective or every, every CTE class is a part of core content. Every course does have kind of a, of a core body of content for that class that's ultimately assessed and measured, but I guess as we, we define that, really, really built on what we measure on our dashboard.
Okay, so, a student who graduates, who has met the expected level of all the different credits, even if they're stronger in some areas and less strong in others, Bs and Cs, they have mastered. If you graduated, you mastered. Can you, are we going to graduate students who didn't master, who didn't do this?
So, your criteria for graduating students is built on the accumulation of, of credit. So, I, my-
But that's not this, because this is-
Yeah, no, this is, this is the portrait we aspire to for our graduates. Is every student that graduates going to meet this criteria? We hope so, that's the aspiration. In, in practical reality, I can't tell you every student is going to meet every one of these criteria, and that they may not still fulfill graduation requirements, but this is the aspiration.
But there are, because we talked about this in the last meeting, there are students in our district who cannot meet this goal.
I, I, I'm not sure that I know what you're asking. Can you clarify that for me?
Do we have any children in our district who are either disabled or otherwise unable to meet the goal as it's written here?
We have students that do require or receive an alternate path to demonstrate their appropriate level of mastery.
And that path is encompassed here?
I believe that it's encompassed here.
Okay. So, whatever their path is, mastery is defined according to that path? Like, our transition students have a path. Is that encompassed here?
I would answer by saying yes.
Yes. Okay.
Yes. This, this is not intended to isolate certain groups of students and say you cannot meet our core expectations for students. Again, there is a core set of expectations that are applied, yet recognition that there are students that will need an alternate path or supports, right, to, to be able to navigate that path.
Okay. And then for, for students who already possess mastery of the core academic content, they're done. So, we're not expecting students who, whose capability exceeds mastery of core academic content to continue. We've articulated as somewhere they arrive because they have now possessed-
Yeah. I, I don't see that in the same way perhaps you do, so tell me where you're seeing that.
Sorry?
I said, I'm not sure I'm seeing that the same way that you are, tell me-
So, I'm just making sure in the wording, I understand what we're wanting to say is that learning is a, there's, it can be possessed. You can have ultimately arrived at a state that we've defined as good, and that possession of that mastery is, they've, they're done then?
I'm not, I'm not tracking with you. I'm sorry, I'm trying.
Okay. So, an academically excellent student is someone who possesses mastery of core academic content, meaning-
And recognizes the importance of being lifelong and a self-directed learner. So, I don't believe that that establishes a ceiling, I think it establishes a floor.
So, the two together produce one standard and the expectation that we continue learning even after we possess mastery of core academic, okay.
Mary, can, um, Mary, can I just, can I just add to your point on the first bullet here, on the, on the vision and belief statement, is all students can learn beyond expectations.
Right, it's right here.
I don't know if that, I don't know if that helps you at all, but if that's what you're trying to get to, I don't know.
Totally. Yep. All I want to do is make sure that the way I'm reading this isn't, matches what we think about all children, and a characteristic that is continuation of learning rather than an arrival at a destination. As long as that's saying that, and you're saying it does, then that satisfies my question.
Yes. That, that is my interpretation of this vision, this visioning activity that we've done. It is not intended to either, A, like, like limit opportunity and/or kind of put a ceiling on learning for, for students, yet it is intended to set an appropriate vision for what students can achieve, understanding that there are students that are going to need multiple paths. The other thing I guess I would say is that, so, you know, I think the, the definition of academically excellent, right, is a path that could be met through multiple or alternate measures as well, right? Like, recognized in the current college and career readiness frameworks, that there are multiple ways that a student can show mastery of ELA content at the high school level. It may be through SAT. It may be through completing a, an early college course, an AP dual-credit course, right, in English or in math. It may be through completing a transition math or English course in their senior year. So, I think recognition in here is that there can be multiple paths, and we may have multiple measures that show that opportunity, understanding that we, we recognize students learn in different modalities, they also demonstrate their learning in different paths, and I don't want to, want to lose sight of, of this. So, I think even as you look at a dashboard, right, as a, as a, as a board, I believe that your appropriate goal ought to be to see that there are multiple modalities that students can show appropriately mastery of their- mastery of their academic content, and then have opportunities to show application of that in some of, I think, these broader skill areas, if that makes sense.
So I just want to make clear that what you just described, I find far more visionary and accessible to students than what's articulated here, especially because this document is for students. If students don't, if this document isn't in front of our students all over the place and it's built in the culture, then it's not going to accomplish what we want it to. So students need to be able to look at that and say, that's me. I'm going to do that. I'm part of this team, I'm part of this district.
This document is going to be used in combination with, I think, other supporting tools that are going to help to illustrate that. I would love to tell you, we could have one piece of paper that would so clearly define every way that somebody might need to interpret it. We can't, right? Like, this document is going to have to be supported by a dashboard that effectively outlines or identifies kind of those paths to showing learning mastery, as well as, I think, strategy statements or a plan, right, that show what it is that we need to focus on, based on, I mean, if all students were already here, there'd be effectively no purpose in creating this vision, right? That would simply be a statement of where we stand currently. It's not. This is, this is an aspiration, a statement of where we want to get to, which has in it recognition that some students are there, some students are not quite there, and they're going to need help. That's the purpose of the plan.
Okay, I think that's kind of what I'm trying to say, so that's helpful.
Gotcha.
You know, that, yep.
Other questions or comments? Moving on to the written reports that are attached, the monthly financial reports, Foye reports, Citizens Advisory Committee report, Board Communication log, Board Committee reports, the Human Resources Policy Committee was attached to the agenda. Any other additional information to share with that?
No.
Other reports from board members? Okay. Are there any other topics for future discussion from board members we want added?
Can I just clarify for the board, or just, I guess, remind you that your January committee, the whole meeting, you will be looking at the five-year financial forecast and some of those pieces you've traditionally done. There will be a brief business portion of that meeting as well, where you'll be considering or approving the playground bids for the two buildings that have a playground replacement. So we knew we weren't going to quite get to the January board meeting just with the timing of the holidays, so a part of that will also be in the facility space, looking not only at those bids, but then the playground playbook and the prioritization of the next five years and where do we go and in what years for the rest of the schools other than Johnson and Lincoln, so.
Next regular board meeting is February 9th here at Hubble. We have a January 22nd chat with the board here at Hubble, January 26th Committee of the Whole here at Hubble. There being no further action to come before the board an open session, I ask for a motion of second to adjourn the meeting. So moved. Moved by Mrs. Booton.
Second.
Second by Mr. Paulson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting is adjourned.